On November nine, two thousand and twenty-one. I need approval, sorry, it is not November nine. I am reading the wrong thing on here. It is December fourteen. I missed the November nine meeting, that's why, I'm just reminiscing. It is December fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one, Planning Commission meeting. I need approval of the minutes for the November nine, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting.
So moved.
Support?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Communications from the audience for items that are not listed as a public hearing on the agenda. The agenda has an asterisk, or each item has an asterisk next to them if it is a, has a public hearing tonight. So if there's anything that you would like to speak to that does not have a public hearing, you can do so at this time. Next item, unfinished business. Eight ninety-seven East Sixteenth Street. The site plan review request for a skilled nursing facility applicant is Iton Flank, Progressive Quality Care.
And I believe that this item had been tabled at the last meeting, so that I move that we remove this item from the table.
I would second that.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. It has been removed from the table.
And we're asking you to table it again. So you heard a little bit already tonight. We tabled it for one month last time. Obviously, they're still making some changes. They've acquired another piece of property, they need to do the rezoning, so we're asking that to be tabled again.
All right.
Madam Chair, since the last meeting, I actually went to a conference where we had a session on parliamentary procedure, and I realized that we've been doing this incorrectly. We should not be tabling this, we should actually be postponing it until another definite meeting, which automatically sets it on the agenda, so that we don't have to move to remove it from the table.
Mark's looking very confused.
It is. If you, if you look up the, the difference between tabling and postponing an item, it's, it's really clear. It's, matter of fact, I thought immediately about this item when we were talking about it. So, I move that we postpone this item, do we want it to the January or February meeting? With this one, did they?
January.
January. I, I move that we postpone this item until the January Planning Commission meeting.
Does that need a second?
Does that need a specific date, actually, though?
Second that. It's, what is it, January eleven?
Eleven, yes. So...
To the January eleven, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Planning Commission. And then we don't have to remove it from the table, it'll just automatically be beyond the agenda.
Okay. Is that okay, Mark?
Never.
Okay. Sounds good.
So we need a second and a vote. Did you second that?
Dave seconded, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And, and I am willing to spend twenty, twenty-five minutes with anybody who wants more definition on that, because it's a, it's a fascinating topic.
I'm sure it was well worth the drive.
He's an attorney, we trust him.
I was gonna say, and how many drinks did that take?
It's fascinating.
Fascinating. Fascinating. Moving on to new business. First item is two hundred East Fourteenth Street, two hundred and two East Fourteenth Street, two oh four East Fourteenth Street, and three fifty-six Lincoln Avenue. Rezoning request is to rezone these four properties from traditional neighborhood residential, the TNR, to education, ED. Application, applicant is Hope College. All right.
Wasn't sure if you wanted me first, or the applicant?
Usually, the applicant, unless there's some sort of specific reason as to why city staff wants to come forward to explain anything.
Either way, it's your preference?
Sure, let's have the applicant first to kind of speak to the item, and if there's anything that we need to add, we can have city staff add to it.
Good evening. Tom Bielsma from Hope College. I'm the Vice President for Business and the Chief Financial Officer here, and it's a pretty simple request. We own these four parcels that were mentioned, and that we are simply requesting that they rezone to educational. What's, you know, timely about this right now is, there's, as you probably are aware, a lack of daycare in the area, and we have many faculty and staff who are struggling right now with daycare. And we did purchase this property, which is the two hundred East Fourteenth Street from Pillar Church. There's an existing building located there, and the plan right now is to repurpose that for daycare usage. And so, and then we decided to include several other parcels on that block with this request, because long-term, we would like for that entire block to be zoned ED, which is consistent with the city master plan. So any questions that you would have?
But right now, we're only talking about those three parcels?
Well, there are four parcels.
Or four parcels, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're only talking about those four parcels, yes.
Okay.
And we, we don't own all of the parcels on that block.
Okay.
You know, as they become available, we consider them.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
All of these four parcels are owned by the, the Hope College at this, at this time.
Currently, okay.
Currently, yeah.
Any questions? Yeah.
And the only question I would have is on the daycare. Can you tell us a little bit more about that, and, you know, will it be only for Hope? Employees, or?
Yeah, yeah, and, and this is proposed at this, at this time, there, I'm not involved with the committee having conversations about this, but we have a committee at Hope College that has been committed to trying to find, really, an out, an outside provider. We would be providing the space for them, and they would come to operate a daycare. This would be primarily for Hope faculty and staff, but we would anticipate that the capacity will, may, and perhaps even likely be in excess of what we would need, and therefore it would become available to those who are not employed by Hope College.
That's excellent. I mean, that's a huge need for us in this region to have more daycare availability, so I commend you for doing that.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, what's the timeframe that you're looking to redevelop that area?
What's that?
The timeframe? How quickly are you thinking?
Um, I mean, I, I guess ideally, we would like to have something operational by the fall of next year. It'll take some time to secure an outside person and, and to do some renovation work there, to prepare it. So, I guess, ideally, that would be the, the situation. If it could happen sooner than that, great, but that would be my, my best guess at this point.
Can you speak to what's currently there?
There's just a, for the, three of the four parcels, there's just vacant land. The, the building that is there, is, was a youth building that was utilized by Pillar Church, where they had youth programs that they operated out of there. It's a single-story structure with a basement, correct, Kara? We've been using the, the facility this past year as a testing center for, for COVID.
Okay, that's what I thought was there.
And it's been...
The two hundred, you're talking?
The, the two hundred, yeah, East Fourteenth Street, yeah. But Pillar Church, we had an arrangement with Pillar Church for them to allow us to use that for a testing center.
And what is surrounding these lots currently?
Residential homes.
Okay.
Parking?
And, and the open, the open parcels that are there, we anticipate tho, those would be locations where we would build some additional, what we call cottages, or student housing, that would be consistent with the, with the neighborhood homes that are there.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just, just comment, I think it's, I also think this is a great idea. I think this is great for the neighborhood, great for Hope College. I love the idea that if there's not enough need for the Hope College staff, that you're opening it up to others. My understanding with staff is that it needs to be more than fifty percent utilized by Hope College employees in order to be able to qualify under this. Do we need to put any kind of stipulation in, Steve, or, in, in that regard, in the recommendation? Well, actually, we're just doing it, we're not doing a site plan, we're just doing a rezoning, so no, we don't put anything with that.
Yeah, we're just rezoning, aren't we? So, once we rezonate to ED, then it's whatever's allowed in the ED district. If they want to change that, then they would have to come back to zoning board of appeals or to us to change it.
You are exactly right, thanks, Josh.
So the existing requirement is at least forty, fifty percent, then?
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant?
Not really a question, but I just think it's good to point out again that this does fall in line with the city's master plan.
Correct.
So that's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Good.
That is a question I had for city staff, was that, do you, that this entire block falls into the ED district under the master plan?
It does.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Because I know that there's been a lot of talk previously from other neighbors in these neighborhoods, they're concerned that the ED district would move into their neighborhood and continuing to expand, which, as much as we love Hope College being in this town, that that would not encroach into that neighborhood anymore than it currently is. So, that's the only reason why I'm a little concerned about this, so I just want to make sure that that's something that's already been established.
Yeah, I do have a couple slides, if you want to just quickly go through sort of staff report?
Yeah, I think that'd be great, to be on, on the public record. Thank you very much.
Yes, no problem.
Can't resist going through the master plan, as your planner, so, yeah, you've hit on a lot of the high points already, but just kind of real quickly, I did put a couple slides together, just to kind of go over some of the things. There. So, this is a copy of the zoning map. I know you have this in your packet, and it's probably a little bit easier to see in the packet that you have, where they're kind of side to side, but I'm gonna try to do my best to kind of go through this. This is a copy of the zoning map. You can see the blue is the ED district that's out there today, the tan is the TNR district that's out there today, and the green highlighted parcels are the ones that we're talking about for rezoning here today. This, and I know it's not the same scale, but maybe just quickly bear with me here, the blue is really the equivalent in our master plan of the ED zoning district. So, anybody goes to make a rezoning, the first thing, you know, the planner's gonna do is crack open the future land use map and see if it's consistent, or, you know, that's gonna be what provides the guidance for us about making any kind of changes. Unfortunately, it seems like over the years, as mapping has gotten better, you know, we've dialed in our master plans, you know, parcel-based, and, and I guess I just want to remind everybody, you know, the master plan is a guide. It's not like zoning where it's, you know, exactly to the parcels, but obviously, as mapping has gotten better, it's a little bit, it looks a little bit the same as zoning. What's important here, I thought, to look at, concentrate on, between Lincoln and Columbia, you see the, you see the ED district going south of basically Fifteenth Street. When you look at that, hopefully, when you look at that in terms of, so this is just a bigger view of our zoning map, so when you look at that in terms of the, the bigger, the bigger scale here, between Lincoln and Columbia, between Fourteenth and, and really south of Fifteenth Street, you can see where it's still tan today. So, the master plan is telling us that, you know, that area going south, that half a block south of Fifteenth Street, is really what the master plan is kind of envisioning for this area. When you talk about that bigger issue of, you know, the ED district getting, you know, overtaking the area, when you marry up those two, these two documents, really, it's just sort of that, that little, I guess I'll describe it as a little bit of a hole there, between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street, I counted maybe around fifteen parcels. And then, you know, if you're paying really close attention, there's a couple parcels just on the east side of Lincoln, between Thirteenth and Fourteenth, and then there's actually a couple over by Fairbanks, south of Eleventh Street. That would sort of, you know, finish off that ED district. So it isn't a massive amount of properties that are sort of envisioned to continue to be ED. So I guess I thought those maps would be helpful guidance for you as you kind of consider this, and you're absolutely right. The rezoning really should stand alone on its own, you know, consideration. The daycare use is allowed in the TNR zone today, it's, as long as it's accessory to a, a church or a school, and then for the college, it has to be rezoned to ED to have that same daycare use. So you're right, it doesn't mean that they would absolutely have to do that, but that's the reason why they're moving forward with it. We did have the conversations with the college early on, that it does require that at least fifty percent, the majority, more than fifty percent, has to be for faculty and staff, and then they could offer it up to the public after that. Some of the other material in the staff report, I put the actual criteria from our ordinance. When you talk about rezoning, these are the criteria that you should be using to make your recommendation to city council. So I listed out those six different criteria, along with the staff comments. Bear with me, just to kind of try to summarize these really quickly, that the application is aligned with our Udo ordinance. Staff believes that it is, as I mentioned before, it's really a, a function of the master plan that you saw before, and the use that we're talking about is permitted in both the existing, as well as the proposed. That the application request would be consistent with the city's master plan. And again, I stated, I stated in the report, sort of the quote from our master plan, as we talked about the college campus district, and listed several different uses that were described in the master plan. I would describe, you know, a daycare use to be consistent with those uses as well. That the request would not be exclusionary or spot zoning. Again, as you saw earlier, this is really just a continuation of the existing ED district that's out there. That the use that's proposed can meet the Udo standards, as we've talked a couple times already, they certainly can, provided that at least fifty percent is, is for the college faculty. And that the zone district is consistent with the trends and land develop, developments in the general vicinity of the area. Again, the area is adjacent to the existing ED district, and it's in the Hope College overlay district as well. So, just real quick, brief description of our criteria that we use for, for rezoning, and those should be the criteria that you use making your recommendation to city council. Staff is recommending that you forward that positive recommendation to city council. I did want to also mention that these folks also had a neighborhood meeting with, the public workshop with the neighbors. I think you got that in your packet as well, so you saw some comments there. I would describe most of those comments as really sort of, maybe just some general concerns about being able to get traffic through on Fourteenth Street in the winter, or how the college is, is taxed and those sorts of things. Nothing that really associated with the actual rezoning, at least in my opinion. Hope that wasn't too quick.
No, can you go back to the other map?
The, the master plan map?
Mm-hmm. So, you're talking, we're talking about...
We're talking about the space that's just along Lincoln, correct?
So, we're talking about, we're talking about the four properties that are on Fourteenth Street?
And Lincoln.
And the one on Lincoln?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I was just using the master plan map to show you that the college district really extends even south of the ones that are being proposed for rezoning.
These are, I have the C of Lincoln, look over C, it's definitely Lincoln.
So, in the master plan, these are all blue?
So in the master plan, these are all blue. In the master plan, the blue even goes that half a block south of Fifteenth Street, so it would extend to the other side of Fifteenth Street.
Okay.
I think...
Does that... Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. It's in the bottom right corner, I see.
Bottom right corner, yep.
Something for the other property then on Lincoln, if we change it to, to the ED district, I think if there's a current home there, because it has to go back, I think, if they acquired it now, it has to be singularity for Hope College use, or at least fifty percent of it, correct?
Well, the, the daycare is the only thing that has the requirement that the majority of, it has to be accessory to the, to the use for the college, that's what kicks in, the more than fifty percent, it's the daycare.
Specifically, the daycare thing?
Specifically for the daycare, yeah.
I have a question, essentially the applicant is, what's the plan for the other home that's there, that's also gonna be rezoned into it?
They haven't indicated anything at this time, but other, other than the future of building cottages, which is really what's on the adjacent properties that they have there now.
Because Hope College owns the whole corner of Lincoln and Fourteenth, those three properties?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Those are currently cottages that house students.
Right. They own a couple of the other properties that are still in the TNR, that are, you know, on the north side of Fifteenth Street, but they're not included in...
Right.
...in this.
Okay. Any questions? This does require a public hearing. I will open a public hearing at this time. If anyone would like to speak on this rezoning item, they may come forward, and you can state your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak. Now is your chance.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sulema Martinez, and I'm the owner on two oh one East Fifteenth, so it's right, and right behind the daycare where they're gonna be placed. We missed a meeting that they have in, I think it was December first, Hope College, but for us is that, again, what is that gonna do to our taxes? We don't understand very well, you know, the change from one zoning to, to another one. And the other concern for us has been the traffic from Hope College, because we have a lot of kids that jump over our fences back and forth, so that would be something that we would like to have in place, that if they do put something in there, we would like to have a private fence, where people don't jump, and, and things like that. But, for me, it's more than anything, property taxes, what is that gonna do to us, and how is that gonna affect my, you know, our property on two oh one East Fifteenth? My husband is here, so I don't know if he has any questions of his own.
He can come, he can come forward and state your name and address.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Mike Martinez, I also live two oh one East Fifteenth. At the, the trespassing between college students, it's, it's a big concern, especially during, when the season starts to get warm. We get a lot of kids just walking through, you know, just right, right through our driveway, right through our property, and it's a, it's a concern. And we'd like to know what, what would be done about that. And again, we talked about taxing, my wife and I.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Peggy Aldrich, three four one Lincoln Avenue. I did go to the meeting at Hope College, and I was pleasantly surprised that the information we received. The major thing I see, rezoning, whether it's in the master plan or not, every house could be a family house. Every property could be a family property. And Holland's screaming for affordable housing right now. Get somebody in there, or Habitat could build the house in the empty spaces. Okay? My other thing too, and I mentioned before, was the traffic. And I would like for, I know it hasn't been decided, but in the wintertime, those streets do not get cleaned up well. And I would love to use Fourteenth Street, but I choose not to, because it's almost impossible. And heaven forbid that a fire truck would need to get through there in the winter to come to my house or a neighbor's house, and not get down there, have to go another block or two to get there. And that's the big winter thing. You know, the daycare, fabulous, I would have loved to have a daycare like that around when my kids were little. I have no problem with the daycare, but I do have a problem with the traffic flow, the parking on Fourteenth Street, that's, that's part of it, that's all part of rezoning. And even if, like I say, in the master plan, each house, each property could be potential income for this, and housing for others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak on this item? All right, I will close the public hearing at this time. Mark, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I guess I'd just say, would you like us to try to comment a little bit on, perhaps on...
If you could, yes.
Yeah. So, in, in regards to the taxation issue, you know, I, I would foresee there'd be no impact whatsoever on, on their taxes, if this is rezoned to the ED district. Yeah, I really don't see any, any impact whatsoever in regards to that, so it should, it should remain the same. Yes, this property will be rezoned and changed from an assessment classification to, to a nonprofit, but these folks, you know, their, their property will remain residential and so forth, so there shouldn't be any impact on, on taxes, that their taxes would go up. In regards to snow plowing and stuff on the streets, so I think, yeah, we, we know Fourteenth Street is, is a little narrower than some of the other streets in the neighborhoods there, and, and I would grant the one woman who spoke up that it could be challenging in the wintertime if the banks are really high, for, if you got parking on both sides, to then have two cars kind of go side by side, get through there. That could be very challenging, you would have to probably wait, you know, kind of pull to the side and let another car come through, but as far as I'm not, as far as I'm aware, there's not any time there where the banks are so high that, you know, vehicles cannot get through there, at least with a one lane. And certainly, there could always be a time where emergency vehicles can get through the street, it just, you might have to jockey a little bit, if you got, you know, vehicles coming at each other head-on, so. I just offered those comments up, so...
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Question, comments, or anything from commission members?
Yeah, for the daycare, I am a little bit concerned with parking, so, you know, parents coming and going. I know here on Tenth Street, that can be a little bit of an issue, now that it's widened, it's much better for the daycare behind Hope Church. But, as a safety concern, just want to make sure that when you're looking at repurposing that building, that parking and having a safe drop-off and pickup area is top of mind, especially with the traffic on Fourteenth.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. So, with the ED zoning, anything that's built there, is that site plan review come to us, or does that go through just staff?
I guess that would depend on, on what it is.
So like, if they're gonna build a daycare, would that come to Planning Commission for approval for that site plan, or would that just go through staff?
I guess I'm not completely sure, just based on the size alone, it would probably be staff, but...
Yeah, I think in this situation...
Is your mic on?
So the building is already there, so they're just gonna... So the building is already there, so they're just going to be looking to renovate it. So I don't believe there would be any trigger to required a, a site plan review procedure in this case, whether it's Planning Commission or administrative. I think it would just simply go right to the building inspector. If the rezoning is approved, then, then it's permitted by right, and then it's just simply kind of a repurposing of the building. So there would be no site plan review. Now, if there are other things in the ED district that, that might be required elements, I don't know, I mean, we would have to look at those. But, um, so a couple of the, the neighbors here mentioned an item about fencing, presumably, and trespassing. So there's not like a site plan review with the daycare that we could say, hey, you've got to put some fencing in now. So there's really no requirements for that. I guess, you know, we can just perhaps hope that the, the Hope College representatives are here and, and listening, and, and maybe out of goodwill, could see themselves for putting some fencing in along those, those properties that they own on Fourteenth Street. But that, you know, that would really kind of be up to them if they wanted to do that.
And as a planning commission, we're looking at this specific rezoning based on the area surrounding it, not what is going to go there. Because once we rezone it, anything allowed in the ED could go there, no, no matter what. And now, depending on the size of the building, it could require a site plan review or something like that. But we're just looking at it as, this is a good area to change our zoning to ED, not a daycare, not cottage houses. It's, those are all allowed. They could make all cottage houses there. Or it could be a giant daycare if they wanted to do that, as long as fifty percent, as long as it was allowed in the ED district. So we have to look at it, I guess, as a planning commission, as a zoning change, not as a daycare and cottage houses.
Correct.
I guess that's what we have to.
It could also be like the buildings down Lincoln, closer to the fieldhouse, that are like.
It could be many, many things. They could combine the parcels and make those three into a big, or they could buy the whole entire, you know, block and make it to a new lecture hall. I mean, I'm just, those are things that we have to look at as a planning commission. We're approving the ED district, not a daycare, and not cottage houses. And, and I think we get a little straight that way when people say, oh, we're going to put this here. And they may, or they may, as soon as we change the zoning, they can put whatever is allowed in the zoning. So we have to look at it as that way. For me, I see it as continuation of the current zoning that's surrounding it and our master plan, so I see it as a good thing. As for the people with the trespassing, I would definitely go talk directly to Hope College, get a big dog. But yeah, I, I mean, that's something that we don't really have control over. We can't, because there's no site plan review. Once we change, even if we don't change the zoning, you're still going to have those issues. And that's something that I would take up with Hope College themselves as a book, because we can't change any, require them to do anything at this meeting, or now if there was a future meeting and they were going to build a bigger building where we had control of that, we could add, address that. But if they're repurposing the same building that they, that they currently own already, then they don't have to come in front of us. They just have to go to the buildings, to the city staff.
Luis, did you have something?
No, and I think that was my point. I was trying to determine why now and what's the interest of the four properties. You know, we're coming in and looking at the daycare, which is great, but then the purpose of the other ones hasn't been defined yet. I think that was the question I was trying to get at, is what's the long-term plan for some of these? And maybe, there is none yet, but we do have to be prepared that whatever is allowed can happen once we re, you know, rezoning. So I think it's not losing sight of the four, because we like the idea of the one.
Anyone else? I have a question for the applicant, if you could come back up a second. Now, I didn't realize that it was a repurposing possibly of the building that's already there of two hundred. That, is that the initial idea?
The initial idea, correct.
Okay. So two oh four and three fifty six are already houses that are housing students, or are they single family?
Uh, they would likely be housing students, right?
Two, it's only one. There's, there's only, I think there's a.
Two oh four is not a home.
One, right now. One of the parcels, right?
Three fifty six is a single family home, or is that for students? That's, that's Hope College owned.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And that would be, yeah, we consider them, or we refer to them as cottages, but yes.
Cottage is not in the ED currently.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We do, we do own a handful of, of cottages that are not in the ED.
Okay.
And we're subject to the same restrictions that others are subject to in that area.
So my question is, what is the purpose of rezoning three fifty six?
Just to be, of, of the one that currently is in use, or where the homes currently exist, is that the one?
It's on Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah. Just to be consistent with the, with surrounding area.
Okay.
We would prefer that the properties that we own, or the, the facilities that we own, would be in ED zoning.
So that would not be part of your idea of a daycare?
No.
But the two hundred, sorry, the two hundred, two oh two, and two oh four would be part of the daycare? Or just the two hundred?
No, it's just the two hundred.
Okay.
The others will likely be student housing, consistent with what's in the surrounding area, cottages.
Okay. Great. I didn't know if anyone else had any questions for the applicant?
I mean, when, when it joins the ED district, then it joins the parking lot district. Because if they're
Once it's, the E district, it can be anything Hope College desires, yes. Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I don't, I, I do for staff, though, and that has to do with, you guided me down this, Brooke, thank you for that. Three fifty six currently is governed by TNR requirements for a number of occupants, number of unrelated occupants. Does that change the number, does the number of unrelated occupants change when it moves to ED? So in other words, and maybe, maybe you know this.
I believe, I believe it does change, that once it's ED, you can go beyond four. Within a, within a unit.
Okay. So that's, I don't know if that's where you were heading with that, Brooke, but that's where, that's where I saw that, that going, is that, that makes it possible for three fifty six to have a larger number of occupants in it than, than it does currently, and would allow for two oh four and the one in between, that forty foot one, for there to be a cottage there as well.
Yes. That was part of it.
Yep. Which, which gets back to what Luis and Jeff were saying of, hey, this is, you know, we, we, we want to make sure that we don't lose focus on the fact that this is a rezoning that would allow anything that would have, that could happen in ED to happen on these particular lots. I'm not sure that, that changes my mind one way or the other, based on, because we've got the master plan that's clearly showing this, this block moving to ED at some point in the future, as well as frankly, the, the north side of the block across the street, across Fifteenth Street as well. So it's not, it's something that was contemplated as part of the master plan in the long run. But, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to be thinking to ourselves, oh, great, daycare, moving, moving in here, when it does potentially mean more non-related, non-related occupants in three fifty six, and potentially in the, if there's something at two oh four and something in the one next door to it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks again for coming up to the mic. My hesitancy here is because of the history of the Planning Commission with these neighborhoods, and what we've gone through in these neighborhoods, and the concerns of the residents, is that I don't want to jump the gun on moving the boundary of the education district if it's not absolutely necessary. I get the need for the daycare. I think it's great to have daycares for employees, and I wish that more businesses would do it. But like Jeff said, that's not the only thing that they could do with this property once it's rezoned. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking through all of the impacts that this would have on that neighborhood. Even though the master plan does designate this area as an ED district, that doesn't have to be now, that can be in the future. It can be when all four of those properties say, yes, we all want to sell to Hope College, and they're already owned by Hope College, then I would probably consider more about making that whole block, but I just don't want to do it too soon. That's all.
Maybe a question I would have, though, is how do we define the need? Like overall, for, for what they need on, on the property right now? Because I think that, that could also be something that's a little subjective. You know, regarding the timeline and everything about like current need versus potential future need, there could be things that we don't know that are driving this, that there may be a housing need on campus, or there might be some other things that they have to. And maybe this daycare piece of it is a big, big need that they have right now that needs to be addressed. So that'd be maybe my alternative to that as well.
I think when I first started, I do remember, I kind of go back to the property right here on sixteen the Country Club, where there was the desire to change it from agricultural to something else. And that was the first discussion about rezoning without a purpose, you know, just because it would be more viable as a commercial versus as agricultural. But at that point, there was no plan. From my, from what I recall from the conversation was when rezoning occurred, it was when there was a plan brought up, and this is our intent, we want to switch it from X to Y, and here is, you know, the site plan, and we can kind of review it at that point, versus just doing it now and seeing what happens. So I think that's where, for me, I'm, I'm, I'm more okay with saying, I'll rezon the two hundred, the other three, I would like to see the plan, and then once it's available, let's talk about rezoning at that point. So that's kind of where I'm leaning. I mean, I know they're not asking that, but that's kind of what I would be more comfortable with at this point.
Well, I guess mine on this is, Hope owns the property. We have it in the master plan as ED. They have proposed things to put there. They may or may not put them there, but I see it, we decided, not me, being the newest member on here, but the city decided that this was a good idea for the city, for the city going forward. Hope is growing their campus. They see a need for daycare and cottages, or whatever they want to put there. That's why they bought the property, and that's their specific need. And so they're requesting us to change it to educational zoning, because they want to expand their college and their need. And I see the other side of it, where the, everybody's like, you're taking more single family. Well, Hope owns it. I'm pretty sure they're not turning it back into single family. They're not going to make it single family. They own the property. They're going to use it to the best of their, if it's in the TNR, they're going to use it for student housing with four students in it, probably. Then if we don't approve it, I just see the best use of it is for, since Hope owns it as the college personally. That's my opinion on it. So there's my two cents.
Yeah. There, there are six Udo require, or criteria that we've got listed in the, in this. One, the application request is aligned with Udo. For me, that's pretty clear, yes, it is. The application request will further the comprehensive planning goals for the City of Holland as stated in the city's most recently adopted master plan. We've seen the map. I think that's pretty clear, yes. The application request will not result in unlawful exclusionary zoning or spot zoning. I don't see any, any way that you could say that this would be exclusionary zoning or spot zoning. The proposed zone district is consistent with the future land use map in the city's master plan. Yes, we've been, we've been shown that. The existing proposed use can meet Udo standards required of the proposed zone district. Yes. The proposed zone district is consistent with the trends in land development in the general vicinity of the subject property. Yes. Each and every one of those is yes. So I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
I move that we recommend a city council to rezone all four of these properties to the ED.
I'll second that.
Oh, second, from Jeff. Can we take a roll call, Mallory, please?
All right. So the motion is to recommend the rezoning. Box?
Yes.
Genova?
Yes.
Lozano?
No.
Owens?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Orm?
Yes.
Bosch?
Yes.
DeBlak?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us.
No comments.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Next item is the Planning Commission Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Report.
I just have maybe just a few brief comments to make. You guys were here. You remember these projects. The annual report is something that we want to do to kind of capture all of those things. As you can see, I like a good bar graph, so tried to, tried to sort of graphically show those things as well. One of the things for the redevelopment-ready communities is an annual report. So we wanted to get this done, so we could turn that in as well. Normally, this would be done right at the end of the fiscal year, so we'll have this done a little bit quicker. But we wanted to get this done and get this turned in to the state for that as well. Because of that, we are asking that maybe you can just make a motion to accept it, something that we could have on the record, so that we could turn into the state as part of that. Just real quickly, I did want to highlight, I guess one of the things that I thought you might find interesting, the map that we put in there that has all the little dots on there, that kind of graphically shows you where you were working this year, this past year. So I thought that was kind of an interesting map to include in there. It's broken up by the ways that we kind of break up the different types of projects that you have. And, you know, a lot of this is stuff, and the reason why I guess I like the bar graphs is I just think it's interesting to see the trends over the years. So certainly, if you've got some ideas, something different you want to see, I'm all ears. But we wanted to present this to you, and I guess if you've had any questions, certainly willing to try to answer them for you.
I, I have a couple of comments, obviously. I always have a couple of comments.
I'll allow it.
One is, thank you. Thanks, thanks to this group, twenty-six meetings. You know, that was, that was a bar that, on, on the graph that I went, wow. But then, on page thirteen, really, I think some really valuable information that the, I'd love the public to be able to see as well. The fact that in 2021, we approved three hundred and eight residential units, but even more so. The, the next graph, the affordable housing units approved in 2021 of two seventeen, those numbers are climbing. I think this, this group is doing what it can to try to help move the, move the bar, as it were, on the bar graph, to get more of those in. But I think, I think there's a lot of great information here. Thank you for, for compiling it all. And yes, I was here for all of it, but when I scrolled through, I'm like, oh, yeah, that's right, we did that too, and we did that. And on top of that, we, you know, we got the Udo across the line. And so kudos, kudos to staff, kudos to this group on, on great work in this year, and it's really nice to be able to see the report.
Great.
We've never had anything like this before, have we? To kind of show the summary of what we've had? No.
So, yes.
So he's setting the bar pretty high.
I asked Nathan, I asked Nathan, yes, I sat through all those, all of this as well, and I was impressed with the report.
Yes.
So yes, when we're ready, I'd move to approve it.
I'd support that.
You would?
Yes.
You sure?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments before?
I guess the only comment I would have is, you know, I think it's great, and the information is here. I'm always like a continuous improvement person. So when we look at status as denied, from a staff perspective, is there any learning lessons in those, like as we go forward in 2022? And I'm not expecting you to respond to this, but are you also analyzing, maybe analyzing the data as to what was denied, and how we can make sure that, you know, we move these all forward in, in the future, and everyone has the information we need?
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. You know, I think you see that a little bit more in the zoning variance section. So zoning variances are a little bit different animal than, you know, what you guys are used to. So I don't think it is uncommon to have many more denials at a zoning board of appeals than you will sort of at a planning commission level. So I, I think that is a little bit normal. It's certainly, again, it's kind of interesting to see some, some of the trends there as well. But I didn't see anything in there that looked unusual to me.
Anyone else?
I guess I would, I would comment on that and say, if we're not denying something once in a while, we're not doing our job.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Well, Nathan, would you like to repeat that?
Well, I'll let Dave do that, because I think Dave made, Dave made the additional.
Oh, you supported, yes.
I supported it.
I, I took motion that we.
Are you talking into the microphone?
I motioned that we, in fact, approved this as written.
I would support that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, same sign? Nobody's opposed. So you can send it on that we all liked your report. Tell the state. And then the Planning Commission Fiscal Year 2022 Work Plan.
So I know we talked a lot. So I know we talked a lot at our last work session. I know, I know that spreadsheet is really small. So what I tried to do, what I attempted to do was take the comments that you guys made at the last meeting and, you know, I was trying to figure out a way to, how am I gonna, you know, identify some of these action steps to sort of put on our work list for this year? And so I didn't do that. But after I sort of compiled all of your comments, it kind of struck me that they sort of seem to be in four categories. So transportation, neighborhood visioning, food and agriculture, economic development. And so I thought, well, maybe those are, are work plan areas. And I tried to marry those up with the, you know, I know it's hard to read, but with that large spreadsheet, you know, it has those sort of categories in there. And so that was my idea. That's what I'm presenting to you tonight is maybe our work plan is, you know, to try to prioritize, you know, those four areas. That doesn't mean that if some other opportunities present themselves, we wouldn't, you know, try to check off one of those other items. But my thought was rather than try to have this wrong, long-running list of the things that we talked about, the 30, 40 different items, you know, maybe it's those four sort of broader categories. The spreadsheet that you have in front of you, and I know it's three pages. It's color-coded. So what I tried to do was get some of the other city departments to provide some input on things that maybe they're already working on, maybe they've already done. And so the things that you see highlighted are things that departments are already working on, they've already done. I tried to take some credit for some of the things that the planning department had been working on. So you can see some of those things, not me personally, but for the department. So that's why you see it color-coded there. So I guess if that, if that sounds all right to you guys, that was my idea for our work plan for the fiscal year 2022.
Where's the color coding key?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
That was driving me crazy when I looked at it. I'm like, what do they mean?
That's fair. I think yellow came from Andy at the Parks Department. I think maybe the darker blue may have come from Mark in our department.
So the, I was under the impression that the colors aligned with the four particular categories. So why not, did I?
They just came from different departments in the city that I, I guess I was trying to, you know, just sort of mark as they came in. So I apologize, I didn't provide the key with it. It just came from different departments.
The blues are very close, so that's why I was very confused.
Colors internal, like from city staff, pretty much?
From city staff.
Non-colored are external.
Well, the ones that weren't colored were just ones that either maybe we haven't worked on yet or I hadn't gotten a response from. I, I think there's probably some things from transportation that have already been marked out, but I just didn't, you know, hear from Brian yet on those sorts of things. So the color coding was really just something I did for me as each department gave me some comments.
I would seriously would appreciate if you could make that dark blue a pink or something that we could actually read through. Rather than, it almost looks like it was lined out. And I was scrambling to see if I could find my notes because I know I wanted, when we, you listed the four items. Housing is still one of the biggest things that we have to deal with and how it fits with the rest of it. And I think that one needs to stay.
It's, you mean, like.
No, but he, the four things that were noted and I, I marked up that and lost it.
Transportation, neighborhood visioning, food and agriculture, and economic development.
And adding housing to that?
Right.
Certainly, certainly add housing to that.
It's not going away.
Again, and the idea really isn't that, that those other items wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't work on. But from what we were hearing, those were the things that we were going to prioritize.
I think too, Dave, on that note, number, not number 21, it just says a 21 next to it. They're not actually in chronological order. Promoting the housing diversity specifically in housing. I mean, that's something that we've been talking about for a long time, just making sure we have lots of options.
Well, I guess, you know, with that, if you wanted to, you know, have stuff like, I would maybe just keep the broader category of just housing on there and we'll just add that as a number five.
How is that different than neighborhood visioning to kind of?
Yeah, well, I think we do have it a little bit differently on there.
It's just, that's number two, neighborhood visioning. So if we add housing as number five from an outside person, I'm like, well, isn't housing and neighborhood visioning the same or is it?
I think housing's more specific in my opinion, but I don't know what you guys.
Yeah, I, I, I see them actually as two different things. Is neighborhood, neighborhood visioning is, is creating livable neighborhoods, creating identities to, to particular neighborhoods. Where housing is, hey, we need to find places for people to be able to live. That may be within a, within a neighborhood. But that, that creating a culture within a neighborhood or a, or a feeling within a neighborhood or a bond within a neighborhood, I think is different than the, the housing piece.
The visioning piece also to me speaks amenities. So parks, some businesses, some, yes, some other things.
Is it like neighborhood livability more than visioning?
I mean, I guess the way I look at the neighborhood visioning is that's probably a little bit more of a, almost a sub-master plan type effort versus, you know, housing where we're trying to, you know, affordable housing and that sort of thing. So I, I guess I would draw a distinction probably between those two.
Visioning is the future. Like you're talking about what do we want to see in that neighborhood overall? But housing specifically is a current need that we could be addressing.
Or increasing housing?
Or just housing or?
Housing in general.
Yeah, need.
Housing need.
And housing diversity and housing, yes. So let's add housing to that.
And while we're on that, if you haven't seen, last Sunday's Times Business Section, there's a wonderful article on ADUs in Princeton, New Jersey, where they've changed the ordinance that every residential lot can have an ADU.
Interesting, Dave.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
It's a good read. Princeton, New Jersey.
The, the title of the article is the ADU experience, experiment. Five days ago, New York Times top hit when you search New York Times Business, Princeton, New Jersey ADU.
I'm glad your internet works. Anyway, we are still on Item Planning Commission Fiscal Year 2022 Work Plan. Do you, you don't want an approval for this? This was just a summary for you to give us, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I had heard to add.
Is your mic on?
We will certainly add housing as a number five on there.
Okay.
I, I didn't need anything else unless there was more questions.
And a color key.
And a color key. But this is something to keep us moving forward and keep us on task.
Right, right. And something we can use, you know, hopefully going forward. So you'll see it again next year when we talk about, you know, what we want to look at again.
Great, thank you very much. I like your charts.
Thank you.
All right. Communications and petitions, scheduling of public hearings. There are none?
So we do have.
It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, no. Upcoming meetings. So we do have a couple of public hearings for the January meeting. Obviously you saw the Udo, the Avenue Project on 16th. And then Magnus Capital will also be there for public hearing, which you guys probably got some notices for those already as well.
Okay. Communications from commission members? Any more articles, Dave?
No, Merry Christmas.
Oh, thanks. Yes, you too.
I, I just have one. I forgot to bring it with me. I received a postcard in the, at my home in the mail yesterday from, I believe it was somebody by the name of Brandon Bies, offering to buy my home for cash. So there you go. Yes, I think that Dave may, Dave may have the same postcard or a similar one. I'm, the only reason I'm bringing it up is that we had, we had questions from community members during the course of the Unified Development Ordinance questions as to whether or not the Udo was prompting those. I was reminded that staff did some excellent research and reached out to those folks who were sending the postcards that it had absolutely nothing to do with anything that we were doing at the table here. But I got a kick out of it that there was actually a picture of my home on the postcard with a computer-generated notation that looked like handwriting next to it saying, "We pulled this from Google Maps. We didn't drive by your house." So for anybody out, out there who's thinking that what we're doing here is generating those kinds of things, I, I've yet to see that happen. But as somebody who lives in a neighborhood that was not necessarily impacted directly by Udo, I'm getting those cards myself. So I didn't call to see how much they'd offer me.
No. And the timing of that during the Udo was impeccable.
No hassle.
Untimely.
No hassle, cash sale.
Yes. Well, Merry Christmas to everyone and communications from staff?
Just one more comment, sorry.
We'll let you.
We did send around an email for education opportunity. So just let me know if that's something you're interested in. I think there was a deadline of January 7th that we had to do some registration by. So if you're interested, just let me know. If you want me to resend the email, let me know.
So then once we get that certification, then this turns into a paid position?
Let's talk to Mark about that.
Oh, okay.
Double what you're getting now.
Oh, yeah, it's fantastic.
You know, for years working with Habitat.
Two snacks, yes.
We might add some cheese on that plate. So just to keep on your radar screen too.
All right, is your mic on? We're still in our meeting, Mark.
Sorry. So Ottawa County usually always has a, a great training session too in January, February. And I know that some of you have attended that. And I'm kind of looking at Jen because that'll be a great one. And Jeff, oh, Jeff, Jeff's a pro. He knows the planning stuff, but it might be a good refresher. So when we get that information, we'll be sending that out to you too. So it's kind of like a, a one evening thing. Ottawa County does it like on a Wednesday night, six to nine o'clock, but it's a great refresher and it's a good thing. So we'll get that out to you when we receive that also.
Great, thanks. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support?
Alls in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Everyone wants to go. Merry Christmas.